Okay, Mr. Chairman, they say we're ready. Okay, here we go, call to order. And please rise and salute the flag. Pledge of allegiance to the flag. Thank you, Counselor, may I have the Open Public Meetings Act statement?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen, in compliance with NJSA 10:4, the Open Public Meetings Act, and in accord with DCA guidelines related to the operation of video conference meetings, this matter of regularly scheduled meeting of the Jackson Township Planning Board has been published and posted in all appropriate locations.
Thank you, roll call, please.
For Monday, May 18th, 2020, the Jackson Township Planning Board Meeting, Mr. Dolan?
Present.
Dr. Campbell?
Here.
Mr. Riker?
Present.
Mr. Nigro? Is absent. Mr. Justwicki?
Here.
Mr. Enselbuck is absent this evening. Mr. Wall?
Here.
Mr. Fleming?
There.
Mr. Ricardi?
Here.
Mr. Haring?
Here.
Mr. Hudak?
Here.
Okay, may I have a motion for the payment of voucher recording secretary for this evening, May 18th, 2020, please?
So moved.
Second. Roll call.
Mr. Dolan?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Justwicki?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Ricardi?
Yes.
Mr. Haring?
Yes.
Mr. Hudak?
Yes. Um, next up, approval of the minutes from our last meeting on April 20th, 2020. Does anyone have any comments or questions regarding that? Changes, no?
I make a motion to accept.
Second. And roll call, please.
Mr. Dolan?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Justwicki?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Ricardi?
Yes.
Mr. Haring?
Yeah.
Mr. Hudak?
Yes. Okay, um, engineering and planning matters, Doug, do you have anything?
Nothing, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Peters?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Um, legal matters, I guess we have a few resolutions to go over?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, and the only legal matter I have for open session is just the acknowledgement of receipt of a letter dated today from Jason Tuval regarding one of the resolutions.
Okay, and do you care to elaborate, or?
Other than they generally object to the, its form and substance. It's not unexpected.
Okay. Um, okay, we have a number of resolutions. Is there, Sean, can I do these all together, or should we do each one individually?
You have to do them individually, there are different people who are qualified, Denise just gave me the.
Oh.
Which is fine, she's right.
Okay, that's fine, okay, the first resolution is block 21702, 21801, lots 32, 57, 58, 59, and 61, that's Solomon Zolti. Can I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
And roll call, please.
Mr. Dolan?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Wall? Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Haring?
Mr. Haring?
Yes.
Did you pick up Mr. Haring's vote?
Yes, I did.
Thank you. Um, next resolution is block 22112, lot 5, 220 Faraday LLC. And can I get a motion, please?
Let me, let me just articulate on that matter, Mr. Dolan, Dr. Campbell, Mr. Fleming, and Mr. Haring are the four folks eligible to vote.
Correct.
I make a motion to approve?
Second.
And roll call, please.
Mr. Dolan?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Haring?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, next up, we have block 7309, lot 11, 2050 West County Line LLC. Can I get a motion, please? Again, are those eligible, are Mr. Dolan, Ms. Campbell, Nigro, Wall, Fleming, and Haring?
So moved.
Second.
And roll call, please.
Mr. Dolan?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Haring?
Yes.
Okay, next up, we have block 10401, 11404, lots 5.01, 52, and 69, Jackson Park North. Can I get a motion, please?
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
And roll call, please.
Mr. Dolan?
Yes, I don't wish to beat a dead horse here, we've been down this road before, but I, once again, I'm gonna take this opportunity to express my displeasure at the corner that I've been painted into and under the duress, and feeling pressured, I am going to unfortunately and reluctantly vote yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Not wanting to be repetitious, but I certainly feel the same way, and reluctantly vote yes.
Mr. Riker?
Reluctantly, I will vote yes, but I will make a point that I would expect courtesy from Mr. Tuval going forward, that in future meetings, he will leave his camera on for respect to the board. I'll vote yes reluctantly.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Ricardi?
Yes.
Mr. Haring?
Yeah, also reluctantly, we were painted into a corner by the courts, but I vote yes.
Mr. Hudak?
Uh, I echo my fellow board members' feelings on this, I reluctantly vote yes. Okay. That is it for resolutions. Changes to the agenda schedule, Denise, do you have anything?
No, nothing, Mr. Chairman.
And, um, board matters for discussion, we have ordinance number 05-20, which is repealing ordinance number 03-17, and also ordinance number 0620, that is repealing ordinance number 04-17. Anybody have any comments or concerns, or would like to make a statement regarding these?
Mr. Chairman, if the board could hear from Mr. Peters?
Certainly.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know we have some new board members who may not have heard ordinance referrals from the governing body, so for the purpose of the record, I'll just, if you bear with me a few minutes, I'll read into the record the statutory requirements. In the municipal land use law under section 4055D62, under the power to zone, the governing body may adopt or amend the zoning ordinance relating to the nature and extent of the uses of land and of building and structures thereon. Such ordinance shall be adopted after the planning board has adopted the land use element and the housing element of the master plan, and all of the provisions of such zoning ordinance or any amendment and revision thereto shall either be substantially consistent with the land use plan element and the housing plan element of the master plan, or designed to effectuate such plan elements. Municipal Land Use Law, section 40:55D64, speaks about the referral to the planning board, and it says that prior to the hearing on adoption of a zoning ordinance or any amendments thereto, the governing body shall refer any such proposed ordinance or amendment thereto to the planning board. And lastly, in the municipal land use law under 40:55D26, it states that prior to the adoption of a development regulation, revision, or amendment thereto, the planning board shall make and transmit to the governing body a report, including identification of any provisions in the proposed development regulation, revision, or amendment which are inconsistent with the master plan and recommendations concerning these inconsistencies, and any other matters as the board deems appropriate. So, the law speaks to two documents, one is the housing element of the master plan, and one is the land use element. And again, just for the record, the planning board had, in the summer of 2017, reviewed and approved a housing element and fair share plan prepared by our COA planner. And if the board recollects, last fall, November, or December of 2019, we did a reexamination of the master plan, which was adopted by the governing body and by the planning board, as well as the, by the planning board in December of 2019. So to that end, what Mr. Hudak was referring to was, at some point, the board needs to indicate whether or not we find that referrals, the referral ordinances are consistent with the master plan. What I'll remind the board members is that, as one of the recommendations in the master plan, we spoke about use standards, on, and I have it with me, so just bear with me for one second, on page 16 of the report, we talked about revisions to use standards being considered for various uses, including but not limited to places of assembly, schools, and educational facilities. So, from my perspective as a planner for the board, we, these recommendations from the governing body to the planning board are in fact consistent with the recently adopted reexamination of the township master plan. That's all I have for now, Mr. Chairman, if anyone has any questions, I'm happy to try to answer them.
Thank you, anyone? No, I have no comment on these.
I have a question. Mr. Peters, repealing these ordinances will take care of some of the things that are still outstanding?
They are things that are currently before not only the planning board, but the governing body. What I can tell you as a matter of procedure is that our only responsibility here at the planning board is to make a determination and report back to the governing body in advance of the public hearing on the ordinance, which is normally the venue within which you'd have discussions about the specifics of the ordinance. But again, I'm happy to answer any questions you want. I can tell you that what's being proffered in ordinances 0520 and 0620 were specifically discussed in the master plan in 2019.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Doug, you're muted, unmute yourself.
Okay, good now?
Yep, you're good.
Okay, or does the, um, does the ordinance, you know, speak to the requirement for connecting to a sewer versus trying to get one of these facilities on a septic system? Or is that beyond what we're talking about, or need to?
That's not what's, the ordinance is repealing the previous ordinance, which terms took schools and not-for-profit educational facilities out of certain zones. So by repealing that ordinance, you would put those as permitted uses in those zones, and then the remainder of the land use ordinances or the design standards for the, of the township of Jackson would apply to any application for one of those uses.
I'm, there's just like concern from, from say, an engineering perspective, that that much volume of wastewater flows needs to be directed to a public treatment plant versus a septic system outback, that's, you know, my only.
I would think that going forward, the governing body transmitted to the board after introduction at first reading at the governing body, by law, they're required to send it to us. At some point in the future, if the governing body wanted to ask the board to look at the standards that are now back in place, that had been removed in 2017, and perhaps repealed and put back in 2020, then we can say, okay, perhaps schools should be permit conditional uses, as opposed to just permitted uses in the zone. And based upon them being permitted conditional uses, you could set up design standards, not like what we might do, say, for a gas station.
Okay, got you.
And so from that perspective, if you have them on a particular high-speed road, if you have them on a certain-sized tract of land, if you have, so we could, if we wanted to, moving forward, as part of one of our subcommittees, have that conversation about what to do after we repeal the ordinances from 2017, that might be a proper planning exercise, but what was transmitted to us was simply to repeal the two ordinances that had been adopted in 2017, which was contemplated in the 2019 master plan reexam.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else, so, questions, comments?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Joe.
Okay, so, Mr. Peters? So if, if the master plan review in 2019 has now put in, I don't exactly know what you would call them, that's your fellow work there, but if it, if it's put in a provision to deal with this on a case-by-case basis, is that what you're saying? Or am I wrong in that?
What the governing body sent to the planning board?
Right.
In ordinance 0520 is to repeal ordinance 0317. Ordinance 0620 is to repeal ordinance 0417. So as those took things out of the ordinances, these two current ordinances in 2020 would put back in the things that were taken out in 2017. What the master plan reexam envisioned was change, changes to the development regulations of the municipality. And we had started off by indicating that we could look at revisions to certain use standards relating to, but not limited to, places of assembly, schools, and educational facilities. So if we first get the old ordinances repealed, and we're back to where we were in 2017, then perhaps if the board directed the professionals, we could look at perhaps conditional use standards for some of these things, and specific standards that may be generally used in the field to allow this type of development.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, the issue before the board is the forwarding of these two, of the two ordinance for review, and whether or not they're consistent in the master plan. I just want to make sure that Mr. Peters is, is thinking ahead proactively for other items that can be reviewed, but it's the legislative bodies prerogative to send us, us being the board, these ordinances, and as Mr. Peters has testified as the professional, he finds them consistent with the master plan and the master plan review.
Okay. Um, now, there's nothing that we need to adopt, right? This is just.
We would need the, we would need the board secretary or the board attorney to prepare correspondence to the governing body that we find that the ordinances are substantially consistent with the land use element and the housing plan element of the master plan. That's normally what we do, sometimes sort of breeze through it, but in this particular case, I wanted to make sure that everyone who was new understood what we're doing. In the end, there'll be, the findings of the board will be transmitted in memo form, there's no resolution or anything like that. We would just report back to the governing body, either through Denise or Sean's office, that we had, that we discussed them, that we made these findings.
But you have to make the findings by vote. You have to, you have to adopt the finding.
All right, um, anyone have any other questions or comments regarding this? No? Okay, so then, I guess we don't need a motion, so.
Mr. Chairman, yeah, if I, if I may, just to, I apologize, I wouldn't normally do this, but the type of, you should, respectfully, you should have a motion to adopt the findings that the two ordinances are consistent, are generally consistent with the master plan.
Okay. Does anyone care to make a motion?
I'll make the motion based on the recommendations of our professionals, that these, both of these ordinances match our master plan, yes.
Thank you.
Second.
And we have a second, okay. Can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Dolan?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Justwicki?
Yes.
Wall?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Ricardi?
Yes.
Mr. Haring?
Yes.
Mr. Hudak?
Yes. Okay, um, next up, we have a lot of applications waiting for, to be rescheduled. Now, it's my understanding, I guess with the holiday coming up, we have a shortened amount of time for notice. So Denise, there's no way that we can schedule any of these for our next board meeting, correct?
Well, the time extensions can be extended, can be heard on June 1st.
Okay, how many time extensions are there on this?
We have page number three, it's block 19703, lot 2. That's a time extension. And then the next application, which is block 19501, lots 29 and 30, that's also a time extension.
So we have three applications that are simply time extensions?
Because the first one, that other block that I did not mention, which is block 11601, lot 23?
Yes.
The applicant had asked to be put in July, July 20th.
But they still need the extension, correct?
Oh, they still need the extension, but they just won't be on our June 1st meeting.
Correct. So, I don't know, what is the feeling of the board? I, I can't see having a meeting and bringing everyone out for our next board meeting for only two time extensions. What are, what are your thoughts? Anyone?
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Sure.
Also Burke Holdings, that could be taken care of, June 1st, and then the Jackson Township, the 180-foot tower, which was already noticed. That's, I'm sorry? That's a capital project review, Mr. Peters just said.
Okay, I guess, so then we have enough for a meeting, I, I don't want to bring out our professionals and everything unless we have an agenda worth having a meeting.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I, I spoke with Denise on Friday about this, and we kind of got on the same page. I think it's really a good idea to get rid of the, or extensions, just to free up the agenda, and these, like, I'll call them administrative items, it, it's a good chance to take care of them also. So I think we have enough on the plate to make it a real meeting.
Okay, anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, also just remind the board, currently at least, the court order directs the board to hear the Jackson Park meeting on June 15th.
Okay. Another.
Exactly, there's no need to say anything. The expression is truthful, we'll attempt to address that again, because, and I'll put it on the record, because the judge articulated it, there's a concern that it's very difficult for proper public information with these electronic meetings. We will address that with the court, but we, but the board must at least schedule it for the 15th at this point.
Right, you know, my concern is the public. I want to give the public ample opportunity to have their say and examine all of the exhibits and, you know, comment on, and ask questions. That's a big concern of mine, and, and this is not the right forum to do that.
I have not disagreed, and I will carry that message forward to Judge Troncon.
Okay. And I'm sure there are probably a couple of hundred residents out there that share my, my views. Okay. That being said, so we will have a meeting on June 1st, then Monday, June 1st, that'll be our next meeting, and Denise, you will put together a, an agenda for that meeting.
Yes.
Okay, so let's start.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, if I may, just, because I know Adam Feffer is, I saw that he is part of this meeting, and he's an attorney for some of these. So it's my understanding that it's the board's inclination that block 19703 lot 2, which is a time extension, and block 19501, lots 29 and 30, which is a time extension, be held on June 1st, along with the Township Capital Project, which is block 2603 lot 1. And I guess the, to finish the Burke Holdings matter, those would all be on June 1st?
So that is block 2603 lot 1, Jackson Township?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
So that is June 1st? And then we have the other time extensions also for June 1st.
The two time extensions, two out of three, and then the Burke Holdings, I'm sorry, which is block 22010, lot 6.
2201, lot 6. Yes. So that, all right, so block 22010, lot 6, Burke Holdings. I need a motion to carry that to June 1st. I need a motion to carry that to June 1st, you said?
Yes, here, but that was the recommendation from Denise. I have no issues with that as well.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that.
And I can work with Mr. Feffer to make sure that, that information is ready for the board.
Okay. Move. So I hear, okay, and roll call, please?
Mr. Dolan?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Riker? Mr. Just Wiki?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Ricardi?
Yes.
Mr. Herring?
Yes.
Mr. Hudak?
Yes. Okay, now we have block 10401, 17802, lots 5.04, 57.01, Jackson Park, South Section. So we're going with June 15th on that?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, that's pursuant again to court order. And, Mr. Chairman, you and I had the opportunity to speak about this, the rest of the board may not be aware. I've also had contact with the applicant attorney for block 6501, lot 4203, which has a time extension, they waived time through May 31st. They would like to, it's a self-storage proposal. They would like to see if they could at least be scheduled, perhaps as a backup for that June 15th meeting.
Well, do you feel, I mean, this, this could be a pretty large application. Three-story building. I, I don't, I don't see it being heard unless we lead off with that.
What, well, the court, there's two reasons why, I, I don't disagree with that. The question is whether or not ultimately Jackson Park South does in fact move forward on the 15th or not. Perhaps the court and or. So I'm just, I'm just suggesting that to have that as a backup and give us some flexibility between now and the 15th.
Okay, all right. Anybody, everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
Yeah, no problem.
Okay, good. All right, but let's, let's finish up this Jackson Park South section. We have a, a motion, we have a second, we just need a vote. So roll call, please.
Mr. Dolan?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Just Wiki?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Ricardi?
Yes.
Mr. Herring?
Yes.
Mr. Hudak?
Yes.
Okay, and we discussed block 2603, lot 1, Jackson Township. This is for a cell tower. We're going to hear that on June 1st. Can I get a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
And roll call.
Mr. Dolan?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Just Wiki?
Yes.
Wall?
Yes.
Fleming?
I'm not sure that this is actually a cell tower, it's through part of the canning radio system. I just want to make sure we're talking about the same thing.
A, a tower.
Okay, yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Ricardi?
Yes.
Mr. Herring?
Yes.
Mr. Hudak?
Yes. Okay, next up, we have block 21202, lots 6.01 and 7, Isle 9 Grocery Store over on East Veterans Highway. What is the story with this one? Anybody have any background on it?
It's an initial testimony and I was thinking possibly July 6th.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I had heard from Mr. Feffer as well. And while he would rather have it potentially as a backup for June, I would recommend scheduling it for that July 6th meeting.
Okay. July 6th it is. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
And roll call, please.
Mr. Dolan?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Just Wiki?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Ricardi?
Yes.
Mr. Herring?
Yes.
Mr. Hudak?
Okay, next up, we have block 4201, lot 3, Cedar Swamp Plaza LLC. Any background on this?
The attorney for the applicant had waived time to July 20th.
Okay, and is that what we want to go with on the July 20th meeting?
Yes, he would rather go later in July because this way he wants to have a live meeting versus a virtual.
Good, okay. On this, on this particular application, I believe the board has already seen it, heard it, approved it. But I believe there was some litigation where there wasn't traffic testimony that was offered. The board is going to be here just kind of exclusively to hear that.
Okay.
So where that, what that does to the agenda, I'm not really sure, but, you know, that, that's what it is. We won't be going over all the typical stuff that we normally do.
All right, July 20th it is. Anyone care to make a motion?
So moved.
Second.
And roll call, please.
Mr. Dolan?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Just Wiki?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Ricardi?
Yes.
Mr. Herring?
Yes.
Mr. Hudak?
Yes.
Okay, and next up is block 6501, lots 42.03, Safe Store Land Company LLC. And this is going to be our backup for, of June 15th. Anybody care to make a motion?
So moved.
Second.
And roll call, please.
Mr. Dolan?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Just Wiki?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Ricardi?
Yes.
Mr. Herring?
Yes.
Mr. Hudak?
Yes. Okay, next up is block 20101, lot 30, Sam's Road Subdivision. Anyone have any background on this?
This is initial testimony and I have it penciled in for July 6th.
Is that doable with the other application?
I think so, because the only other one we have is the Isle 9.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I, if I may, and I'm sorry, Denise, just thinking it's through. It may be better, and as opposed to gearing them up, to move them further back because Jackson Park South is going to have to fit in somewhere. And along with that, the safer store. And to only have, to have two applications on for the 6th might be overloading that because the odds are we're going to carry some testimony over from, from June 15th.
I agree.
Sorry about that, we should have talked about that.
No, that's fine, that's fine.
So can we get another, so we're talking July, oh no, July?
20th.
20th. Does that sound doable?
That's, it's fine, I think it's fine, but I, I just wasn't 100% with the Jackson Park.
And that should be, Mr. Chairman, I've been in contact with Mr. Al Fury. I'm fairly positive I can get him to waive time through that date.
Okay, good. All right then, can I get a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
And roll call, please.
Mr. Dolan?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Or Just Wiki?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Ricardi?
Yes.
Mr. Herring?
Yes.
Did Mr. Herring say? I couldn't really hear him.
Yes, I did.
Okay, there he is. Mr. Hudak?
Yes. Okay, and here is the time extension that we spoke of earlier. This is block 11601, lot 23, Shore Brothers Property. The feeling is, is that we can hear that on our June 1st?
No, July 20th. They asked to be heard on the 20th.
You're right, 720. Motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
And roll call.
Mr. Dolan?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Just Wiki?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Ricardi?
Yes.
Mr. Herring?
Yes.
Mr. Hudak?
Yes. Next up is block 19703, lot 2. I won't even attempt to pronounce that. Is a two-story house of worship, a time extension request. Anyone?
Chairman, we had talked about having that June 1st, I believe.
Make the motion.
Second.
And roll call, please.
Mr. Dolan?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Just Wiki?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Ricardi?
Yes.
Mr. Herring?
Yes.
Mr. Hudak?
Yes. And lastly, block 19501, lots 29 and 30, Pine Rock Walk at Jackson. Anybody have anything, any background on this one?
Mr. Chairman, only again that because there's no notice required, we had spoken briefly about having that June 1st as well.
Everybody okay with that?
It's fine.
Okay. Anyone care to make a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Dolan?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Just Wiki?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Ricardi?
Yes.
Mr. Herring?
Yes.
Mr. Hudak?
Yes. Okay, that concludes all of our rescheduling of the existing applications that we have. Our next planning board meeting will be June 1st. I have a feeling it's going to be another Zoom meeting. Hopefully by our next scheduled meeting, the 15th. We'll see what the governor has to say. Does anyone have any comments, questions, statements? Nothing?
Nope.
Nothing further to add? Okay, that was painless. Doug, you're.
Just one question from Michelle. Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
You gotta send me the background. You look like a, you look like a deity with a world wisdom behind you.
Good, that was my goal.
Mission accomplished.
See, I had, I had a tropical beach background and I took it off.
I saw that, but no.
I like this one.
Too much, you look like a movie poster.
All right, guys. Is there anything further for this evening? No? All right, can someone care to make a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, guys, thank you all for participating this evening. And I guess we'll see, we'll see each other probably virtually on June 1st.
Thank you.
Stay well.
Be well.
Be well, everyone, thank you all.
Good.
Good night.